Speak. Kami Rogers is our clerk and she will monitor your time. And as you get closer to the end of the three minutes, she'll hold up a yellow card. Kami shows you the yellow card. That means you have one minute left. And then when your time has expired, she'll hold up a red card. Show us the red card. There you go. That means your time has expired. So if there's anybody here who would like to provide comment on the budget for this, for the West Hartford Public Schools, go ahead and send a note in the chat box. You can just put a question mark or write hi or something like that. And I'm monitoring the chat box to see if there are anyone, if there's anybody from the public who would like to provide comment. Mark? You have a thought?
Why did, because I can't see everybody. I can only see like handles. Do we have anyone on the public? Can you see?
It looks like we do. Have a couple of members of the public.
Great.
Welcome to all of you who are here. So I'm thinking we can potentially give this till about 6:40 or so. Does that seem good with everyone? All right, we're going to give this another couple of minutes and see if any members of the public decide to join and speak. And if not, Tom, do you recommend that we move into the budget workshop immediately or take a break until seven? What's your recommendation?
I'd say at this point, we move into it immediately. That's been the history of this meeting where we've had, we've waited. I just texted, I think, three of the last four years, there hasn't been public comment at this point. People watch the meetings, send emails, but typically not a hugely attended meeting anyway. And if we were in person, it's up to you guys. If we were in person, we'd slide right into the meeting. So I don't see any harm since it's all recorded and being played back. People can access it anytime they want if they're not watching it live, so.
That works for me as well. And we can also put the word out as a reminder to the public that they can always email all of us if they have thoughts about the budget, as people have been doing, at boardmembers@whps.org. We all get those emails. We do have one new person who's joined. So if you'd like to make a public comment, you can put a question mark in the chat box and that way I'll know to call on you. But if you're just here to watch, welcome.
They're actually on the phone, so they might just want to ask. They can just ask a question if they'd like.
Right, so if you're just on the phone and you can't see us or utilize the chat function and you'd like to speak, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. I think we're actually going to adjourn the public hearing and move into our budget workshop. It's about 6:41, so everybody can close out of this meeting. The budget workshop invitation was sent separately. So see you in a minute.
Actually, Deb, if people can stay on this line, that's fine. Just anybody that's in the public, just understand it's a public meeting, but we don't have to leave and then come back because that'll be easier for you. It's all linked, so I just stay in this meeting while we're all here.
Just a technical question. Do we have this meeting room open for a long enough amount of time that we can do the whole budget workshop?
Yeah, not a problem.
Great. All right, so should we head and move into the budget workshop?
You know, before we start, because I'm worried I'll forget at the end, I want to thank Andy, Liz, everybody on my team, as they've worked tirelessly to kind of redo, think creatively. And I've, and I also, Matt Hart, the town manager, and I have spoken daily for the past three weeks about the realities of the current situation. And so the whole time we've been moving through this, there's, everything's basically, I don't know. And, you know, we've been operating under, let's solve today's problems today, think about tomorrow's problems, and then begin planning for what's in the future. The problem with this is we have to establish a budget with, you know, approaching not that closely, but $200 million about spending next year for, for a year that we don't know what it's going to look like. And there's different responses and we don't know what the economy is going to look like. Not only do we not know what school looks like, we don't know what the economy looks like and what our tax base can look like. And I'm sensitive to West Hartford taxpayers and the, the people that are out of work and the people that are worried about, you know, their family's livelihood. And with more and more discussions, it just becomes one of those push-pulls that you guys also feel, I know, that you've been elected to protect our schools and to do better for our schools. And you come into this situation where, what does that mean? Are we going to bounce back quickly in the economy? Are we going to be in a recession? Will it go as far as a depression? What's the next year going to look like? We don't really know. What's our stimulus going to look like? Federal stimulus packages, which we know from representatives, and I'm on a federal legislative committee, we know what they're working on because we get asked for input for that, but we don't know what it's going to be for West Hartford. So really, the whole process right now is a big dartboard. And it feels like we've got pretty small arrows trying to hit that dartboard. And the idea being, you know, using the medical, the terminology of a doctor, do no harm. We, we can't at this point, with everything being unknown, make decisions that will decimate our schools and our school services. That's why so many people choose to be a part of our community. So to think about, how do we do this? And how do we provide education in a way that doesn't unduly tax our residents? And also doesn't do something that is a mistake that will hurt our kids and our schools? The other part of this is you guys get to decide on the education budget and our priorities. It's your biggest job. And a lot of people, you know, we all know the quote, show me someone's budget and I'll show you their priorities and I'll show you what they care about. And the fact is, is that while we craft the money that's allocated to us, the town council is the one that actually allocates the money because they're the, they're the ones that can tax and tax a town. And it's kind of a interesting question because in a lot of states, there's a separate tax for schools and the superintendent's, one of their roles is going out and talking about your tax base and talking about what the tax rate should be for schools. And there's often sometimes people that are like, oh, wouldn't you hate that if you had to do that? And I'm like, ah, there's part of me that thinks that would actually, I think I could be, do a pretty good sell on what we're doing for our schools. And I think I could put that forward, but we're under the system that we're under. And in those discussions with the town manager, I think it's become clear to him that the goal, clear from him, that the goal moving forward from the town council, not officially, they haven't voted on it yet, is the town doesn't want to see a tax increase, that we'd like to stay as close to a neutral tax from last year. So that's been kind of the parameters that we've looked at. And I want to thank Liz and Andy, which I said before, about thinking creatively in ways, how do we get there without hurting who we are? So I'm going to present the ideas that we've come up with so far, and I'm going to ask Liz to join in at different points. So just hold on, I've got two systems. Okay. All right, can everybody see the slideshow now?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so where were we is kind of the first question. The 1920 adopted budget that we've been operating under is $168,800,000. I went through with you, you know, 30 years ago when we presented the budget, or a month ago, a month and a half ago, whichever it was, the roll forward budget, which was an $8.68 million increase. If we just did the exact same things we've done in the past, it would have been $8.68 million, which would be a 5.14% increase. We've already had a workshop about the budget. We were, we were relatively far along when the coronavirus and this crisis hit. And we had seen the changes that I had put forward in the budget, which were $2.81 million cut from a roll forward budget. So that ended up with a net increase of $5.87 million or a 3.48% increase. So the recommended budget that I had put forward was, you know, $174,670,000. Now, there are some things that make this not just cuts, because when you stop school, you also stop some spending. Now, we also know that the governor put forward his concerns. And one of the things, the governor's executive orders was that we had to honor contracts, including things like transportation contracts, as much as is reasonable. And that means going through part of the contract, not, the idea wasn't that we'd be supporting profits from places, but that we'd be supporting employment. And so things like our non-contracted workers will continue with, like our teaching assistants, our cafeteria workers. And we found work for them with kids and with grab and go. But the budgetary savings really, and that's one of the reasons why I'm not being specific in a figure, in that we're still in negotiations with First Student. So even this part of what are we really saving here is going to be a bit of a guess. But here's, here's those areas that we're getting savings from. And the other part of this guess is, is that the governor has said he'll make a decision by May 20th about the rest of the year. So this is assuming, we've got to make assumptions. Do we go back this year? At which point, the savings would be less? Is this through June? At which point, the savings would be more? So some of those savings, daily substitutes. Obviously, we are not, we are not in any way spending money on substitute teachers right now. Overtime and part-time wages, none of those. Contracted facility services, we're not spending money on work that needs to be done immediately in our facilities. Transportation services, as I've said, we're in negotiations with that. And Liz, Andy, and our attorneys have been discussing this with First Students Management. And I would expect we'll have an agreement in the not-too-distant future. Professional and technical services, those kinds of services that we pay for from outside, some of the special ed things that we had spoken about before. Non-supplies, materials, equipment, obviously, things that we'd be using up in the schools from copiers to field trip supports, all of those different things, and then some equipment that we're not using. Now, there are some increased costs, as we've said before. You know about the technology that's out there right now. And we know about the grab and go. Now, that's out of the nutrition services account in May. Liz will do a presentation on those. But those are the areas that we'll see savings. And then I'm going to ask Liz to explain a piece of the education stabilization grant under the CARES Act, which is the coronavirus aid relief in economic security. So if I could, Liz, would you describe what we expect from the CARES Act?
Certainly. As Tom had mentioned, the Cronus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act as it's called, was signed on March 27th. Included in that act is an education stabilization fund. And earmarked in that fund is $13 billion that will be provided to elementary and secondary schools. It's going to be distributed first to the states and then to the individual districts. The plan is to allocate that based on our Title I grant funding. So at this point in time, we have not been notified as to what the amount will be, but we're working on estimates to try to determine how much we will receive. When we do receive these funds, they can be used for some very specific things as far as costs associated with coronavirus, as far as distance learning, cleaning supplies, equipment, training, those types of things. But there's also a general provision, which for us is more important. It says that these funds can be used to continue to employ existing staff, which clearly we're doing under Governor Lamont's executive order. And it also allows us to cover costs that maintain continuity of services. So for us, what these funds will do is enable us to cover a portion of our current year expenditures with this grant funding, enabling us to have a larger surplus, which we'll be able to use to cover next year's costs and therefore reduce the budget.
All right, thanks, Liz. All right, so those are the savings. Here's the actual amendments. Now, let Liz explain the pure financial ones at the bottom half of this, but I'll explain some of the shifts we made before. So remember, all of these are working off of the budget that we presented previously and assuming that the adds are included and the cuts are eliminated, except for these things. Eliminate the new math coach position at the middle school level. We, we all have seen the value in that. We all want it. Paul still argues with me about wanting it. This will appear in the budget again at some point as a recommendation from the superintendent, because I think we could get good value from the math coach at the middle school level. But I understand the need right now not to necessarily add positions, and that's a savings of $85,000. We had a small increase in school supply budgets based on the Consumer Price Index. This amendment would eliminate that $30,000 increase. Number three is something that, I'll be honest, we're back and forth with because as we've said with a lot of these things, we hope we can do them. You know, it's like special ed spending, can hope we can cut it, but things might happen. The district worked with our bus transportation company, consolidate bus routes with the goal of reducing the number of routes total by three. This amendment will reduce the transportation budget accordingly. Now, with concerns about crowding and everything else, we'd actually have to get down to the numbers, work the routes, and decide if that's possible. This will necessarily mean some of the same bus stops that have existed forever won't exist forever. This means people in the fall will write letters to the board and will write letters to us saying they have to walk further than they have before to go to either a bus stop, and those bus stops will shift. But it's a $200,000 savings that I don't think it would be responsible not to look at that. Number four, reduce utility budget through the use of current year utility savings. This was a mild winter and the school closure resulted in significant utility savings in the current year. This results in an accumulated surplus in the utility services fund, which we'll use to offset utility expenses in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. This amendment will reduce the utility appropriation in the general fund. So that's a quarter of a million dollars, we feel, we can save there. Reduce the contribution, oh, sorry, reduce the contribution to the town pension plan due to revised assumptions. Liz, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. Our non-certified staff participates in the town pension plan and we receive a information as to what our actuarially determined contribution is each year. The town recently went back to the pension board and was able to revise some mortality table data and lower our contribution for the upcoming year. Our portion of that is $189,000.
All right. And then the health budget, the lower state partnership plan premium rates. The state partnership premium, premium rates are lower than were previously anticipated on further discussions. These lower rates enable a reduction to the health benefit appropriation of $380,000. Now, the next two are kind of the big, number seven and number eight are kind of the big, kind of the big nuts that I'll let Liz explain. And the first one is just about reserves, and I'm reticent to use reserves, but reserves exist for a time of emergency. That's now, because $200, $2 million, the alternative would be cutting, you know, 24 staff members, 24 teachers, rather than using the reserve. So Liz, do you want to explain what the almost $2 million savings is here?
Certainly. As part of collective bargaining agreements, many of our retirees receive health benefits in retirement. There's a premium share for that. Retirees pay a portion and the board pays a portion. Generally, the funding from the board goes through the general fund and there's an appropriation there each year. What we're recommending or suggesting this year is that rather than funding that through the general fund, we fund it through the retiree health reserve. And the retiree health reserve is a program in our self-insured risk management fund, where we have been accumulating funds each year to address other post-employment liabilities. As Tom said, we don't generally recommend the use of reserves, in part because it creates a hole and we don't want to do that. You know, best practice really is to budget for your current year expenses and fund those each year. However, we do have a reserve there and it seems like the prudent thing to do this year is to utilize that reserve.
All right. And number eight are those savings that we talked about before, in $1.5 million deposited in a non-lapsing account for fiscal year 2021. Now, this is something that at some point, the town council will need to adopt a resolution. I don't know, Liz or Andy, do you want to talk about that and the 1.5 million?
Certainly. Connecticut general statutes allow for what's called a Board of Ed non-lapsing account. For fiscal year 1920, it allows us to put up to 2% of current year budget into an account that does not lapse and then can be used at the Board of Ed's direction and authorization for education expenses in the upcoming year. In order to establish that type of account, as Tom said, it would require a resolution. The resolution simply says that we're authorized to deposit those funds and there would be a corresponding reduction in the 21 budget for that amount. At this point in time, based upon the items we talked about in the previous page, we're estimating that there could be 1.5 million available to put into this account.
Quick question?
Yep.
Is that a resolution that the town council needs to adopt or that the Board of Education would need to adopt? The town council.
It's actually council. And we've got a copy of that that we've, we've already had written and I'll be supplying it to Dallas Dodge, the attorney for the council and the town manager. And we've already spoken about this. So I spoke about it with the town manager.
Thank you. And Mark has a question as well.
Go ahead, Mark.
Hey, Liz, you talked about the self-funded risk insurance piece, and I don't know if that's connected to the overall liability for insurance, because with the kids being out of school, they're, just my, my own homeowners and car insurance is going to give me a refund for two months at a rate because you're not driving as much and things like that. So is, is the insurance that's attached to schools, having kids in school, that part of that piece, or can we get any of that?
I'm sorry, Mark, I had a little bit of trouble hearing you, but I think you were saying, what was the reserve a result of? Did it have to do with the schools being closed?
No. Is it, is the, the self-funded risk that you talked about, insurance piece, is that the liability insurance for West Hartford, for our schools, the overall insurance for our schools?
Oh, no.
Okay, so is there a savings for there because our kids aren't in school? That will the insurance company, you know, because that can get re-underwritten and looked at actuarially, maybe get a refund from that as well?
So the way that the self-insurance fund works is it looks at both inherent risk and then claims experience and then develops a contribution for the upcoming year. Until we have good data on this year, we won't see, we won't see a savings from that. But in the future, there will potentially be a reduction in our self-insured contribution.
So are we self-insured on the liability insurance overall?
We are. We do have some policies that we purchased. We have some purchased insurance for some of our property, as well as some of our stop-loss and those items, but they're primarily based on value. But we will see some reductions based on less inherent risk with the schools closed and fewer claims. But it will be pretty minimal. We share it with the town.
And what about the sports? I know that if a child, food athlete gets hurt during sports, there's a potential piece there. Are we going to see any savings in that piece of insurance or how does that work?
I don't think the, the cost for the sports insurance is that much, but I believe that our risk department is checking with our carrier on that to determine if there'll be any sort of rebate on that.
So that would be, but those would end up in our contracted services, correct, Liz?
It would.
Yep.
But there could be future reductions.
Yep. So if we look at the recommended budget initially, was $174,670,000, a 3.48% increase. These amendments take 4.6 million from that budget, a 2.73% decrease for a revised budget of $170,070,000 or a 0.75% budget increase. So with that? Questions?
So Board of Ed members, if you have questions, again, we use the same process we used at our last meeting. Put a question mark in the chat box and I'll call on you and you can unmute yourself and ask the question. Rob has a question. Do you want to unmute, Rob?
Sorry, it took me a minute. You could have read it, by the way. I don't mind.
That's all right. You can ask for yourself.
Yeah. I was just wondering, Liz, how much of the reserve is left after you guys are tapping into it?
How much of the retiree health reserve?
Yep.
Adam, at the end of last fiscal year, there was approximately $13 million in that reserve. It's a reserve that we've been accumulating for quite some time to address the other post-employment health benefits. So using $2 million of this will still leave approximately $11 million in that fund.
Okay. How much, or what is the policy perhaps on how the money has been historically deposited in there? Could you just kind of give a brief overview of that?
You mean how we've accumulated those funds?
Exactly.
So each year, in addition to funding retiree health costs for that year, we set aside a certain amount based on actuarial determination towards future benefits that we will be providing to retirees. There are certain GASB pronouncements that require us to measure that liability, not to fund it, but we have taken the step to proactively fund that to try to meet future liabilities.
And what is the ceiling, per se, on, in your, in those calculations as far as like, you know, what would be the max that that fund would hold?
Well, ultimately, it, there really isn't a set ceiling on that. It's really based upon the actuarial value of the benefits, benefits shared by both the town and the board for retirees. We get that measured every few years. The most recent valuation has not come out yet, so I don't have that figure at hand to know what the overall liability is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mark, you're up.
That's not me.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
So Tom, you kind of briefly mentioned that you were still in the negotiations with the, with the busing. And I'm sure provisions have now, will be taking place in regard to future contracts and how they should be written. And if, in effect, in fact, you are looking at how to write the contracts for future pandemics, John, to bid, will that, can it still be overridden by executive order even though it's an ironclad contract? Are you guys looking at that subject law?
Yeah, we'll, we will be looking at that, but the executive order would, would have overridden it. It's kind of one of those overrides that's, that's just a question of what can they take from you?
But I didn't see what it was.
The idea of that, that basically if we would put our ECS at risk if we went against the governor, governor's order. Now, I will say this, our current contract with First Student, our attorneys have told us is one of the strongest negotiated bus contracts. So what you're going to see from settlements is, and the reason it's kind of, you know, the question is, we have 169 districts, say 100 plus are negotiating with bus companies. Why, they're just one number. It's because every- Why they're just one number. It's because everybody's contract's a little different and we actually have one of the very strong contracts, so. It's one of the reasons we're being aggressive with how we're looking at this and in our efforts to come to an agreement, but. I would say, I don't know, Andy, if you have any update on that, but I know you've spoken with them this week with Liz.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Really, at this point where we're hoping to have a solution in the next two weeks, I think Liz and I would expect to have some good numbers. At that point and, you know, hopefully we'll be roughly in the range that we've. Yeah, Mark, if I understood your question right, I'm sorry, it's a little hard to hear, to hear your audio is that. If, if a company has been paying them the entire time, are they in a stronger position than others? And it really, what we've been working with Shipman who's been, who has a group that's been working with all of the various, the various districts. Is it really, that's not the determining factor on this. We're comfortable in working with the bus companies both. Both First Student and with Specialty, which handles a lot of our special education transportation. Of picking a certain date and making sure that, that we're paying the appropriate staff levels. Going forward from that date. So those are the pieces that we're working on and negotiating with.
I will say I'm glad that they turned their camera on in there because it is Paul Vicinus's birthday and I assumed I was missing a party in the conference room.
Happy birthday, Paul. Thank you for sharing it with us.
This is a genuine pleasure.
I have a couple of questions, but I want to see if any of my fellow board members have questions first. Amanda?
Thank you very much. Tom, would you mind putting your presentation back up just so we could see a couple of the areas?
Sure.
Thank you. I just had a. General question. I want to make sure I'm asking it from the right area.
I will, but you have to hold on a second, so.
Take it down.
Yeah, let me just, I've got to call it back up to say, oh, no, there it is. There it is.
So it sounds like when we're, my question was similar to Rob's when we're thinking about the, the risk involved with. The funds coming out of the reserve. It sounds like Liz, that you've been, you're comfortable with the amount that would be remaining in that account?
I am comfortable with that amount and not only that, but I think that because there is a significant balance there, it gives us an opportunity. Since using reserves creates a little bit of a hole to phase in back to full funding. So for example, you know, this year we're proposing using 1.9 million. Next year, if we need, wanted to use a million, the next year 500,000, there's sufficient reserves there. We'd be able to mitigate the impact on the general fund. To make sure that, you know, in subsequent years, we're not having a very large increase in our general appropriation.
Risk level of the balance of those funds, is that something that we can expect to be steady?
The risk level of what? I'm sorry, the balance of the fund?
The balance of those funds and how they're managed.
Yes, yeah, I think they're going to be steady. I think they're okay.
Okay, and then thinking in the fall, I know that we have to operate with a number of different scenarios that, that we can configure and the team can configure, but. Knowing that there could be other configurations also. Where, I'm just trying to think about where funds would be coming from. In unforeseen circumstances. So if we need to plan for something and there's a very significant expenditure. I know where it's coming from a number of different places and we're diversifying where those are coming from, but. You know, that's where my mind is, is how secure are we with what we need, if we need to pull significant funds for a different structure for the fall?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, Amanda. That's one of the key questions that I, I want to hit on and talk to Liz, to talk with Liz about and have her explain too is. By doing this, we're necessarily creating, let's assume everything got back to normal. We'd be, we're creating a ditch for next year so that we'd automatically to do, to do an increase would be a much higher increase. So what we're hoping to do is hold back money, but not put everything that we hold back into next year's budget. Not put all of the coronavirus mitigation funds into next year's budget, but actually have the ability to step it in. However, if there were an emergency next year, that money's there. And I also very much appreciated last night and the town manager and I have had these discussions. That I'm, we're presenting a budget, but we don't know. So this year, as you guys know throughout the year, we were behind the budget. We had more employees than we needed and we kept cutting from other areas that we'd get to zero. But there could be scenarios that we all know for having to go back to school. That the mitigation strategies could make it so expensive that we couldn't cut enough in other areas to make up. Because we're not talking about a $200,000 deficit or a $300,000 deficit. There are things that the federal government could decide or courts could decide. Or the governor could decide that would be talking about millions of dollars. So. I've talked to the town manager about that a lot and last night in his budget presentation, I was gratified to hear him include in the presentation. To the town council that we don't know what the next school year will look like and if things get incredibly expensive or these things come up. The town council will also have to support us during the year in that way. So I was. I was pleased to hear that because that is something where we all know it's one budget and we do our best and over the years, we've turned money back in and sometimes we try to get to zeros. We would have done this year, we would have gotten to zero, but that if this is something extreme. The fact is, we're going to have to have federal dollars and straight state dollars also. But the town could see shifts. Where the town also has their reserves that maybe at that point the town would have to hit their, just hit their reserves a little bit. In a larger way to make up for something that happened mid-year. Now, if it's the end of the year and we're talking about planning for the following year, then yeah, we're looking at difficult budgets. I think we're looking at difficult budgets for the next couple of years. I think we're going to be looking for questions and asks that are going to be. Very difficult. That's the pessimist in me that if, if we are entering a recession, if it is worse than that. But as far as next year goes, Amanda, I think that. I, I think that we have some reserve funds, not just what we said before, but we're trying to spend that out over two years. So that we have a number of dollars that could make up for things. The other thing next year that's clearly going to be in effect for us is we're going to be living very close to the bone. So some of the things we were doing this year, we're going to do for next year. If we have somebody unexpectedly leave a position in the summer. That's a position we can get by that doesn't have a direct impact on kids at that point, we're not going to fill it. And so every time that happens, as we did this past year. You're making steps in how you can fill some of that hole. Liz, I don't know if I covered everything. You're the finance person.
No, I think you covered everything. I think that was a good explanation of how we phase that in. In order to really have a manageable budget situation.
And then how about with liabilities as far as, you know, as we, the longer that time goes on. There's a variety of situations that could occur with teachers, with students. And most of those things would probably be discussed with the union, but when we. Look at things as far as any liabilities or situations that would come up. How comfortable are you that we could meet those responsibilities? And pay legal costs and be prepared for all of those kinds of things?
Well, you see Gretchen smiling because that is, you know, there's compensatory education questions that aren't just. They're fiscal questions, they're moral questions and they're national guidance questions and they're, they're legal questions. Because what exactly are you responsible for? If a parent, you know, says, well, I'm not doing any of this home stuff anymore. You're just going to have to. Re-educate my kid later and that's not true. We have to work through this now. But there could be things later where we have. Increased costs that could be as early as this summer, the extended school year with compensatory education. But that's assuming we're going to be allowed to be in anywhere this summer, which is a big question. And then that becomes next year's question where we know our kids aren't going to be. You know, there's, math's a hard thing not to see some loss over that time, you know, I, I think that that's. There's a reality of what this is going to mean. Now, there are some of those realities that are going to lead to increased costs. There are also some of those realities that may lead to smaller class sizes necessarily. There are some people with children that are other health impaired. That for the next year, until there's a vaccine, I've already spoken to some of them that have said, I won't send my child back. I know of another district nearby that they've lost at least one full class of kindergarteners. People that have decided that they're going to hold their kid out for another year. Those are the kind of things that I think inevitably we'll see in one way or another. So there's that kind of mitigation strategy that, that you're talking about Amanda, where there's going to be more expenses here. And I have a tendency to believe those expenses are going to weigh our savings. But that there are going to be some things. I don't know Gretchen, if you want to add anything to that because a lot of that's about your area.
You know, but there are going to be unintended, you know, and unexpected costs associated with. Bringing students back to where they were before. You know, that students with disabilities tend to regress at a higher rate than typical students and so we've got a lot of work to do. Although I have to put a plug in for the teachers that are working with them right now and they are just doing such a phenomenal job. That we're hoping to mitigate that. Starting right now, you know, our students are learning and they're, they are progressing and they're continuing with their. With their education and our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. So I'm hoping not to be the pessimists like Tom. And that things are going to, you know, work out and go smoothly as we move into next year. But I'm also a realist and know that it's not going to be true for every single case. And so I'm, we're kind of trying to find those anticipated increases and, and try to plan for them now.
Thank you. I do have one more question, but Deb, do you want me to wait and space it out? Okay, my final question for now is probably also good for you Gretchen and I know that none of us knows. What the trends are going to be as far as enrollment and, and. I've talked to some people who, you know, have, have considered moving and want to move to West Hartford because they've seen our reaction. They've seen. We care for our kids. We put programmatic things first. We do the right thing. As much as we possibly can in all situations and that's something that's reassuring. And so I'm wondering. You know, we won't know what those trends are going to be. And, you know, this year and the following year, but when we look at enrollment, if we do get a lot of move ins, especially with our special needs children. Or if we have special populations of people coming in who have, have needs that require transportation or any kind of outplacement. Are we thinking about that in this budget as well?
So over the last two years, we've seen a pretty significant spike in the number of students with disabilities who have moved into our district. And so two years ago was the first doubling almost of students moving in with IEPs. And then this year it was slightly less, but still much higher than it was in the past. And so you're right, that is a trend. We've had students move in during these four weeks. From other districts and so we have worked with those districts and learned as much about them as we could and we've, we've pulled them on board and we're providing services. So yes, that is something that we look at when we're planning for the following year.
Yeah, and that's a good point Gretchen. I should have mentioned that. The people that have moved in during this time that have registered have been special education students. Which, you know, that's, I understand and your point is well taken, Amanda. Last year, what did we have? 72 students Gretchen?
Yes.
72 students from June on move in that weren't here before that were special education with, or students with IEPs, I should say, so.
Okay, we're going to go to Rob.
Hi, it's a little bit. It was related to what Amanda was talking about five or 10 minutes ago, so sorry. And I'm not trying to go too far into the weeds, but you know, when Amanda was talking about the, the reserves. I, I don't have a strong sense just based on what we heard tonight about any of that. And correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, I don't remember us ever really talking about that reserve in any great length in my two plus, almost two and a half years on the board. So I understand how actuaries work. Friends with some of them. They're amazingly intelligent people. I, so I, I think it would be nice to hear maybe, and you know, Liz got put on the spot of that, so you can't expect her to have everything, right? But maybe at a subsequent meeting, have some sort of historical. Update on that as far as like, this is what the actuaries have typically said we should be striving for. Just like you hear with our town with what the rating agencies want, you know, us to have like 15% or just like at the state level. Where they want the state to have 15% in reserves. For this, I think, exact kind of reason, like a pandemic, for example. I know it's not the same type of. calculation per se, but obviously the actuaries are telling the town or the Board of Ed indirectly. What we should be striving for there and, and that drove. The decision-making process about putting money in there. And so kind of piggybacking on Amanda's point like, well, okay, so if we're drawing down from it. Understanding that there is a significant sum in there. You know, what would be the plan to get back to the number we're supposed to be at? Once we know what that number is, because it doesn't seem like we do, which again, not picking on anyone because that was a wild question that came out tonight. And just then getting a sense of, okay. Then, once this pandemic passes, it might be something for the board to discuss in the future about how those funds have been allocated and. And then in, and it's, as you all know. I get frustrated that we, we do give so much money to the town. So I assume we only ever gave money back to the town. In years past because we were effectively meeting our obligations for that fund. And so that the money we gave back was on top of whatever we would need. And not to go off in too many different directions, but I love this. Initiative that Tom, you guys are proposing that. You keep some money in a non recurring account. I know you've talked repeatedly about how things will change. In the schools from this experience with the pandemic, maybe, but totally this is something that changes for the board. Where instead of this being a one-time thing that was caused by the pandemic where we create this fund. Instead of giving back $700,000 for the town to goose. Their retirement, which I mean their reserves, which I understand they want to do. They, and I'm sure you're going to smile when I say this, maybe they should tighten their own belts. And put their own money in the reserve and that we get our, basically our own little reserve, kind of to your point, right? That obviously we will have challenges in the coming years, but even let's say five years down the road. If you're requesting an increase of, you know, three and a half percent. Well, how awesome would it be that if we were careful with our money? That you were able to tap into the, our own non recurring reserve fund to help mitigate that? I think it just creates another budget opportunity for us to do something like this that I wasn't aware we could.
Yeah, I'll talk about that, Rob, and let Liz talk about the specifics of the past. We couldn't do this before. The, the non lapsing account was just kind of created. The law changed in the last, last year's legislative cycle, I believe, allows us to do that. So this is actually. This is right when we can do it. So. So that this is kind of a first that we'd be creating this, but it, it's not something we can do. The town council has to do it. It has to go by the town council allowing us to deposit it, but I think you're right. This, this changes that scenario as to, okay, this is. What the budget is and this is what we could hold over in that account. So I, I think that it's. It's a new thing we can do, but I also think it's a good strategy for the future. Liz, do you want to talk about, because you have done the health reserves both on our side and on the town side in the past. I don't know if there's a little more you want to be specific about.
Um, yes, I think, Rob, that's really good point that we haven't spent much time really talking about the Board of Ed Health Reserve. It's something that our. Our board who handles our risk management fund talks about, but I think that when we get this next valuation, which should be happening within the next month or so.
Our board who handles our risk management fund talks about, but I think that when we get this next valuation, which should be happening within the next month or so, I would guess. That I could put something together that would show kind of a history of how we funded it. What our ongoing obligations are to meet other post-employment benefits and really provide more information for you. We do a financial report every year that looks at the risk management fund, not just the retiree health, but also self-insured and workers comp, et cetera. But I could pull together some more information that specifically addressed the Board of Ed Retiree Health Reserve so that there's a. More thorough understanding of what our obligations are and how we're meeting those. So I think that's a really good point.
Thank you.
Do other board members have questions?
Well, I have a couple, so I'll, I'll start asking my questions if that's okay. I know that we. Gave away some gloves and masks that we had in our nurses' offices. Because there was such a need in the community among first responders and healthcare providers for PPE. Do we have an estimate of the cost of replacing that equipment so that when our schools open again? Whether it's this year or the fall or later than the fall, we are able to get our nurses' offices up and running?
Yeah, Deb, that's something that we're obviously tracking and Grace and Gretchen and I. Will go ahead and be able to put together as far as restocking our, our schools for, for that. So we should be, we should be comfortable with that. We're fine.
Tom, you're on, you.
Liz, that would be under the FEMA plan, correct? As far as our reimbursement for that.
It would. And so what we've done right now is, um, we have the list of everything we provided. We'll be replacing it. We'll be charging that. We've set up a separate account for COVID-related expenses and we'll be applying FEMA for reimbursement. We anticipate a 75% reimbursement rate on those costs.
Great. And is that also similar for the revenue that we're losing on lunches? Do we apply to FEMA for that as well? Or do we just kind of?
Well, you know, we put that question forward, um, in particular to the State Business Managers Association and what they're. The way they're handling it isn't so much that we would be applying for reimbursement of lost revenue. But that because we have continued to employ our cafeteria personnel. That we might be able to use funding to cover those salary costs. Is how they're handling it. What we are receiving at this point, you know, we're providing grab and go meals. And those do qualify for reimbursement from the USDA. So we are getting a per meal reimbursement for those, but certainly the fund is operating at a loss right now.
Right. And I think that's something that many community members don't realize. Is that normally our student lunches and breakfasts, we get the USDA reimbursement, but we also get the contribution from the student. Do we have an estimate of what percentage of each meal is being covered by the USDA? What our loss will likely be?
We're still calculating the loss. The actual meal cost is being covered by the USDA. What's not being covered are all of the employee costs. So we're covering the cost of the food, the people who are actually out there distributing, but it's the rest of the staff. And some of our more fixed costs that are not being covered at this point.
Great. Thank you. And then I think my only other question. Was, I assume that we've had a conversation with first student about the reduction of bus routes and that's. A figure that they've given us. $190,000 that we're able to.
That's based on, yeah, Deb, that's based on some analysis work that we did. On routes and stuff last year when we were, uh, when we were looking at some different options. So yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all of my questions. I guess I want to double check with those who haven't asked questions yet. So Ari, Lorna, oh Sean, there we go. You're up. It looks like you're not muted, but we couldn't hear you. Try again. Sean says he's going to type his question. While he types his question, let's go to Lorna.
Yes, good evening. A question. Being neutral, trying to be neutral. Let's say that the school year, the young people do not return to school until the fall. And in regard to seniors. Will there be some way of acknowledging their accomplishments and their graduation, certainly achievement next year? And if so, will that be accounted for from a current line item or a projected line item or elsewhere?
Well, it's a good question and something that I've actually been talking to a lot of colleges about. Because a lot of people have said, well, maybe in November you could do a graduation, but the problem with that is. If we're going to have a second wave, November is when that would happen. And so. Actually, the colleges that I've spoken to, most of them are putting any follow-up into the following summer. And I'm not sure how that works. So. We're going to recognize our kids this year at some point in some way. Whether that's on June 15th, we have a virtual ceremony and we hold out hope that we could do a widely distant. Something for our kids where they are spread out and the fact is without a crowd there, there's not going to be any event, we know. With 2,000 people at it in West Hartford, I would bet for the remainder of 2020. So the question is, what does that look like? What does the line item look like? I'll be honest. It's not a significant enough line item that it would have a deleterious effect either way on our budget. But it's something that. I'll say this, a cost wouldn't be a reason why we wouldn't do it. But it's also something that. We've got so many different options, Lorna. We're getting, we're getting to that point where I don't want to make promises to kids. We don't know what the advice from the governor, the commissioner is going to be about the end of the school year. You know, seniors. They're missing a lot of things. They're, they're missing a lot of things this year. They deserve that recognition of a graduation. And I know they're holding out hope and, and I've said before. That may mean it's not June. That may mean it's that if we could do something in July. Spread out or something, or in August before people leave. We'll try to do what we can to recognize those kids. During the Connerd Hall game, if there is a game with people at it in the fall. Do we have all of last year's graduates from both schools go out onto the field at halftime or before the game and get recognized? If that were to occur. Maybe, maybe it's not till 2021 that that has to happen. I don't know. So we'll do it. We'll make sure it happens in some way or some form. And all of us as superintendents are trying to get good ideas from each other, good ideas from the kids. Our principals are in contact with the kids and we'll continue to have discussions about this. So. I know it's not a definitive answer, but it's the finances won't be the reason we won't be able to do it.
And I, and I appreciate that answer because the main thing I was hoping to hear is recognizing. The value of recognizing them and their accomplishments, however that's defined. So thank you.
Sean, I don't see your question being typed in.
I see it here Deb, actually. I can read it.
Well done. Yep. I'll read it out for Sean. After listening to you speak about how we might be covered for our cafeteria staff and food. Question, can we continue to provide weekend meals and for how long? I'm asking because currently students are receiving grab and go meals on a Friday for Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah. Well, we're going to, we're going to keep going with this. For as long as we can. Andy, um, do you want to, I don't, I don't know if you've had an update from Rosina. We're going to keep doing this so that it's available to kids for as much as, for as long as we can. And we'll look at what the reimbursement is going to be like. Andy, do you have a follow-up with that?
Yeah, just that I, I think and, and Liz hopefully will support as well that I, I think as far as our reimbursement and our funding goes. That our plan is that we're going to continue this for as long as we're out. And we'll then, uh, we'll then be able to go ahead via reimbursements and other avenues to capture. The costs that we can recapture, but we, we think that we're, we're okay and we'll be able to continue this. Because it is necessary and it's something that's important and it's something that we've committed to with our families.
Yes, I agree. And, um, you know, as I said, we are able to cover the food costs. So the meals that are being delivered or being handed out on Friday that cover the weekend, we are being reimbursed for those. We're just looking at our other options as far as covering staff salaries. And we feel like we have some good options there. And that, that we'll be able to continue to provide these services for the rest of the year.
Great. Thank you. And thank you on behalf of Sean. Mark.
I'm hoping you can hear me. I tried to fix this microphone thing, but it's no avail. I'm just. But, uh, Tom, can you talk a little bit like with summer school, looking planning for that virtually? You know, in the event that we don't back, we're back in June.
Yeah, I, I asked the question, Mark. We, we had a discussion this morning with our leadership group and. I don't want to announce it officially, but the expectation is that summer school would be a virtual summer school this summer. And I just don't see us, even if we were back for those two weeks to come in. I think that the, um, a digital summer school is appropriate this year. And we're making plans for it and more information will follow, I would say in the next two weeks. But it's a good, it's a good question. We want that opportunity for our kids. To be able to take courses, maybe that open up courses during the year where they could do maybe more musics or anything else. We don't want to strip our kids of that opportunity or the kids that need to make up some credit. We want that available to them. And we've seen some successes, obviously with our digital learning plan. And this is, this has led to some improvements in those areas. I think summer school, we'd also have the benefit of it being more synchronous where kids could be in. For set times and it would look a little different than what we're doing right now because there's not the same competition for devices. So we're, we're actively planning for that now, but I would expect we will have summer school, but I expect it'll be online.
Okay. And the follow-up, thank you. About, um. You know, as we get past this learning curve and we become subject matter experts in distance learning. Is there any thought about maybe increasing the time that any students will be online? You know, instead of a different day, let us go to five days or two o'clock or maybe some additional learning hours as we get through this.
Paul, do you want to talk about that? How we've shifted, especially going after April vacation?
Sure. So, uh, good question, Mark. So after the April break, especially at the elementary level. We've had some evolutions to our plan where all of our teachers just prior to the break have stood up. At the elementary level, a online platform, which is typically Google Classroom for grades three, four and five. And it might be Class Dojo or it might be Seesaw for K-1, two. So that they have a place to kind of hang the content that previously maybe they've just been emailing or this or that. Kind of a go-to place where the, where the students can go. And that also has, is enabling them to do more personalization and more differentiation. We're also asking them this week to begin to look at how they do small group instruction. So previously, similar to what is happening at our upper grades where you're having. At least two check-ins per week scheduled on top of any additional. Supports that students and teachers might be scheduling separately. We said to our elementary team to go ahead and look at how you can utilize a small group setting. To do at least one of those. I spoke with the principals. They're very, very interested. To make sure that we're maintaining at least one, one-on-one check-in. Saying that the feedback that they're getting from the majority of their parents is that's beneficial. So they're stepping into that small group work. We expect that's going to be opportunities. Really for teachers to clarify understandings with kids, to be able to provide some differentiated instruction on the spot. And so on and so forth. At the secondary level, a lot of PD happening. That, that we're trying to take some of our online time that kids do have. And make that more engaging, more dynamic. So the teachers are learning a lot about. Different new platforms that are out there. It's, it's been an interesting thing. And just in terms of some of the Google services that we have. As a company, they've responded and it's not to West Hartford. It's, it's to the national need. Kind of really crowdsourcing what are the features that folks need. So there's been a lot of. A lot of change just in those products. Plus it's really pushed the envelope in terms of teachers learning. A lot more of the digital technologies so that they can have more engaging, more dynamic opportunities with kids.
Uh, Mark, did you have any follow-up questions on that?
Well, no, I guess I did. Have we looked at, you know, I said about one-on-one and like Wednesday, maybe using that any one day. More to an online level and. And then maybe, uh. You know, I know they're using it for one-on-one, one-on-one day. Just trying to increase. You know, learning for the 50-year students, you know, in the middle of the night. Just to see how you expand it and.
I have a meeting this week with, I mean weekly with our secondary leadership. Some of the things, I mean. I, I guess it depends on some of the different feedback. We're collecting feedback on what kinds of needs kids have all the time. One of the things that was put to me today, like that's, you know, just a different piece of feedback. Some, some are looking for opportunities for kids to have a day to unplug. So. Trying to weigh all those different inputs. One, one of the pieces that might kind of speak to what you're asking for. That we're working with teachers on is how do you, how do you engage students into some of this? Some of the content that they're learning perhaps in a more. Kind of group project fashion where, where, where we're enabling a greater number of kids with teacher guidance. To be working on, to be working on pieces, not in isolation, but together. But teachers do have the ability and students do have the ability and from what I understand, we'll make sure that they're asking. Hey, if a small group on any particular day needs more help with a topic. That, that's one of the reasons why we're providing flexibility so we can meet all of those needs. At different points during the week and at different times during the day. And that's, that's essentially a big part of what the Wednesdays are for as well. Kind of some of those ad hoc meetings. To where if you need something as an individual, or if you and a group of friends need something. You can schedule for that appointment and teacher can provide that assistance to you.
All right. We are going to go to Amanda. Amanda? I think she's frozen up. Let's move to Sean and then we'll come back to Amanda. Sean, I can't hear you again. All right, we're going to go to Ari.
All right. Um, my questions are actually less budget, um, related. So I, I hope it's okay. But I was, since we were talking about the online and the distance learning. I just had two questions somewhat related for the, for the elementary school kids. While I know that like instruction is important, a huge part of. The elementary school experience as well as middle school and high school, but they have means to do it outside of the classroom. I was just wondering what opportunities do the kids have for socialization and to have a sense of. Classroom. Like besides the, the two check-ins, like do they have opportunities to have like a classroom? I, I don't know, like.
No, I, I understand exactly what you're asking. Ari, it's a great question. Uh, thank you. Cause it, it allows us to highlight something that. We had, you know, pretty, pretty quickly as we saw this was going to be going on for a period. Right before the break, we started working with our elementary team to talk about events that we're calling community building. And we've given our principals flexibility to kind of shape that and define that. As it makes the most sense in their. makes the most sense in their respective settings. So I know that, and then we've recently talked about how we, we kind of had people play around with it, and then we talked about how we're trying to formalize that and, and look at it more kind of systemically as we come back from break and what roles some of our specials areas teachers can also play with that. So I'm aware of any number of different really cool and exciting things, some that are just really, some of our teachers are doing a morning meeting where they have the whole class there. Some of them are doing things where they have a mystery reader and they had their Spanish teacher kind of dropping in. And, and now they're looking at other things with their art teacher, their PE, and so on and so forth, in different ways that they can do that, so that, so that the kids themselves aren't so socially isolated and really just kind of, we recognize everybody's stuck at home and so you have a very limited number of points of contact. I'll just mention, we've also heard about different ways, you know, obviously they have the social contact at the, at the secondary schools through, through the classroom chats that they're doing. But one of the things that I'm, I'm just excited the principals have done is they've figured out ways to do like spirit days and everybody wears blue and all the rest. So it's, it's, it's a silly thing, but it, it, it just adds that element, that human element that, that is otherwise lacking, you know, when, when you're, when you're isolated as we are.
That's great, thank you. I was just wondering. And then the other question probably applies more to Gretchen. I was just wondering, in all of the, the grade levels, how, how like special ed students are getting their counseling time?
So in many different ways. Ari, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
So it all depends on the particular need of the student and what was identified by their IEP or their 504 service plan. And so what we have attempted to do right from the beginning is make sure that we're connecting with students the same number of times that we would as identified by an IEP. It's not necessarily for the same length of time because not every student is, is going to be as receptive to that one-on-one for that full amount of time. So some of those counseling sessions may be an activity or something that the student is doing on their own and then a shorter check-in with a clinician. But every student is receiving what they need and more, if they need more. So our clinicians and our school counselors and, you know, everyone is checking in, we're also, we've also phased in, two phases now of paraprofessional and teaching assistant support, but they're spending non-clinical time, but connection, social time with students and are able to help our clinicians with another set of eyes, if you will, know if a student is in need of some more support.
And what, what about students who aren't identified as special ed? How, you know, is there some sort of avenue that they can pursue or?
So the same referral process that we use when we're in a building is being used now. So if an adult, you know, or a staff member is, identifies a student as being in need or we have the anonymous alert app, or we have a friend that calls in, the same process happens, happens virtually as it does in a school building. In fact, sometimes even more efficiently because it's easier, you know, to bring something up sometimes when you're not in person. And so those referrals are happening. I'm receiving the reports from those referrals and I know that there's a lot of follow-up and a lot of outreach to community clinicians and therapists that students already have identified, whether they're regular ed or special ed, anyone.
Great, thank you, thank you.
All right, so I do want to just remind folks that this is not a publicly noticed board meeting where we're supposed to be having conversations that are outside of workshop format. So try to keep on this one topic for tonight and other questions that are not necessarily budget-related, we should try to ask at a different meeting or by phone or email at a different time, just so that we're making sure that we're staying within the rules that we're, that we should operate under. So with that, we are going to go back to Amanda, who is back on, and then after that, we're going to try going to Sean.
Okay, sorry, my internet cut off, but I have a Mi-Fi now, so I missed about three or four minutes. I came back on when Ari was talking, so I'll ask you after what I missed or go back and look at it. My, my question was about the CIP. Is there anything that pertains to the budget that we need to talk about relative to the timing of that, or is that something we'll just get updated on later? My, my question's not so much about the status of it, but just all the allocations, I imagine, are, you know, is that something that we need to talk about now or can we talk about that later?
Well, the truth is, we can't talk about it at all because now it's in the town manager's hands and that is one of the two, one of the things that the town manager can make decisions about what they're going to bond, what they're not going to bond, and they can change their mind about some things too. We have sent a list of Bob Palmer, Liz, Andy, myself, sent a list of our priorities of the, of kind of, these are our top grade, you can't, we can't operate without those things done. These are the things maybe you can delay a year, but I also reiterated to the town manager, and listen, there's going to be a lot of things that might be put off. I don't know about that. That's, that's the town council and the town manager's decision. What I've stressed is, we only have a two-month window every year, so we can't stack things up and say, we'll do it two years. We can't take everything from this year and say, we'll do it in two years, because we can't manage that much work and we don't have a big enough window to do all those things. So we want to make sure, and Bob Palmer works for this town and the school, and that's one of the benefits. And Bob has been meeting with the town manager about that. I don't know if Andy or Liz want to add anything to that. Liz, I think that covers it, right? Covers it, right?
Yeah, I think that covers it.
All right, let's go to Sean. I see your question, but why don't you go ahead and ask?
Can you hear me?
Hey, yes!
All right, third computer. All right. So I'm trying to, I guess we're all trying to prepare for a future that we don't know yet. Like, if you had asked me two months ago what Zoom is, I would have had no clue. So I guess this goes out to Gretchen and Tom. And I just want to make sure there's flexibility in the budget for our teachers working with students at all levels. Is there any flexibility for teachers wanting a subscription to a service, a resource? And I know they're being very kind right now by offering, you know, maybe a three-month access, but maybe that time will come to an end. So let's say a teacher wanted access to New Zella and they don't have it. And I know times are tight, especially with this budget, but can you speak to any of that?
Yeah, and I'll let Paul talk about it, because this is actually a discussion we had as an executive team today, because you're right, it's almost, these companies are being very generous right now, but I worry it's almost like the, it's a taste, and then the bill in June's going to be $50,000, which we know, there are a couple of things people have gotten used to where, yes, and maybe what happens is that as we shift some funding to these tools that people are actively using now, there are some tools we've had for technology that some people have wanted, Sean, that, I mean, you know this as a history teacher, you find some things you're like, this is great, and you try to convince people. The National Constitution Center, I've been telling people that teach government for years.
I use it to be honest.
Exactly. That now all of a sudden people are using, and so that all of a sudden it now becomes a need. And so I talked to Paul about how we'll shift budgeting with that and how, how we're beginning to talk to teachers about what are those things that have become needs. Paulie?
Absolutely. So as you said, Sean, first and foremost, you know, there are a number of great resources that distributors have provided free through the end of the year. New Zella is one of them, Dreambox is another, and, and these things are, I know, I know at the elementary level, Dreambox is built right into our, our plan in terms of the opportunity to build fluency and all the rest. And in fact, we were just looking at average minutes and all, and that were used and percentages of students across each of our elementaries that have accessed that. And it's actually quite significant for the short amount of time that it's been up there and online. And I do expect, as you're saying, that when this pandemic is over, there are going to be a lot of asks that are coming. And, you know, I think first and foremost, you know, as we think about what, what is the fall going to look like and what guidance and what conditions will we be operating under at that time, we're going to have to take that into account and set our priorities for anything that we might need to pay for based on those conditions. Then, once we're into a more stable environment and maybe, you know, whether it's the, you know, the federal funding or the state funding that helps support us in unusual circumstances is gone and we're operating strictly under our own, it'll, it'll become that question of, okay, if, if we're choosing that we want to maintain this resource because we've really gotten used to it and we found that it does, you know, just an outstanding job for us, you know, at the end of the day, the question will be, how do we tighten our belts and what is it that we might subtract off in order to maintain that? But that's, that's not dissimilar from what we do every year when we balance out requests for things that we get, when folks come forward and they say, hey, I've got this really new thing that I'd like to have, how can I get that? The how to get it is never so much, so hard as, you know, what are you willing to give up in order, in order to, you know, presume that this better thing is there, or how do we, how do we balance it out across the, you know, the large scale of the budget? So not at all dissimilar from what we do on a regular basis.
All right, Mark, you had another question?
Yeah, either Tom or Liz, getting back to the contracted facility services portion of the presentation earlier. You know, now, you know, again, we still don't know when we're going to be out to, but can we get some of those projects that were on the list completed early, you know, some of the safety mantraps and things like that? Is that still, you know, if we had plans for the summer, say we don't go back to school in the government camps and we start those earlier, maybe get two done instead of one? And, and are you looking at that or that contracted facility services stuff down as part of the budget?
Andy, do you want to talk about that? Andy, I know you know.
Yeah, I can, I can talk a little bit about that, Mark. Again, not knowing where, where we're going to be for the rest of the year, but say, as you, as you mentioned, under the assumption, say, we're not back in. No, also, we've taken advantage of this time to, to do some work. We've been doing work at Bugbee with some of their mitigation issues for the, for the project, the entrance way there, and we'll continue to do that as well. But we do have plans in working with Bob and working with his team. We do have plans that we can go ahead and many of these projects are, are ready to bid out or have been bid out already. And so we do have plans to be able to go ahead and, and start the season a little bit early for us. As far as doubling up and such, understand, as you know, we only have a certain amount of time, manpower, and resources to, to do these projects over the years. And so it's not like we can, we can do twice as many in one summer if we have that extra month or not. So there will be additional work that we can advance and hopefully not be under such a pressure to complete. And hopefully we'll have a better picture of that in a month or so.
And I've said this before, the paving project, we'll never see our, this, their fuel prices are ridiculously low right now. And, you know, I know it's part of the CIP and the sound budget, but there's facilities, I think that were on there for daily and maybe go, go get those.
I, I didn't hear that. My assumption, from what I've heard, was you've mentioned painting projects, is that?
No, it's the paving projects, Andy.
Paving, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, the, the paving, and again, that's, that's in conjunction with Bob and his, and his team in conjunction with, with Public Works as well, but we, we do work closely with them and, and make sure that we're maximizing whatever we can.
Our paving projects tend to work pretty much hand and glove with the town paving plot projects. So if they up their paving projects in an area, we tend to fit in. That's why we've had some extra things done in the past, and I know, Liz, you've experienced that on the funding side, on the town side in the past. So if they increase their paving, more paving will probably happen at the schools, but that's really under their purview at this point.
Yes, this may be a redundant question, but I still will ask, looking at the proposed additional cuts for the budget moving forward as it relates to number two, it's in school supplies. I was just going through, trying to see what exactly that entails. I know with the utilities, that refers to heating, water, electricity, and telephone. In terms of school supplies, does that refer also to like toilet tissue and soap? And I ask that because since those items are not being used right now with us having to stay at home, is that something that is accounted for in a positive way as well?
We're gonna, we're gonna open up an auction site for our toilet paper and see if we can make some real money.
New revenue stream for us.
Exactly.
So we are assuming savings there, Lorna, and that's included under our supplies, materials, and equipment. It's kind of a, a general category. Those purchases actually fall under Bob Palmer's budget, our custodial supplies budget, but we have accounted for that and are assuming a lower spend this year.
Are there other questions? And don't forget, there are other parts of the budget that we did talk about during our prior budget workshop, but if you still have questions about them, this would be an appropriate time to ask because we are going to try to vote on our budget next week. So this is a great time. We have Liz and Gretchen and Paul and Andy and Tom all here. So if anyone has questions about any part of the budget, now is a good time to ask. All right, so, so I think we are pretty much all set with our budget workshop. Thank you, everybody, for joining us and particularly, I just want to, and I know I speak for, I think I speak for the whole board, when I thank Tom and Liz and the whole team for pulling this together in such a way that helps us make responsible decisions, thinking foremost of the students and families and staff here for the school system, but also recognizing the extreme challenges that this situation has posed, not just with the potential loss of income for so many town residents, potential loss of revenue for our town, but also just the level of uncertainty. Oh, Gretchen, I forgot to thank you. I'm so sorry about that. And Rosina, so sorry, I'm so sorry. Thank you for all of your hard work, which has been noticed and much appreciated. So we are in a difficult place. We don't know exactly what revenue we have coming in through the CARES Act. We think that we are going to be okay as far as the state funds coming to, to West Hartford under ECS. There could be, it's looking like if there are additional municipal and education funds coming from the federal government, those would be in the fifth stimulus package, which could be another couple of weeks out. And what's in it? Nobody knows yet because it doesn't really exist anywhere except in, in concept at this point. So it's, it's a lot of unknown and we just really appreciate everyone trying to do their best to put as much certainty on paper as possible and provide us with all these great options. So thank you. And we are set to have our next, well, we have a, an education liaison meeting with the town council tomorrow, and we have our next board meeting will be next Tuesday at seven. And hopefully we'll have all the tech issues worked out by then. Thank you, Jen, for all of your hard work trying to get it to work out. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, all right, thanks, everybody. Have a great night.